Okey dokey. Good evening and welcome to the Monday, November 3rd, 2025 session of the Lake Forest City Council. The Clerk, please call the roll.
Certainly, Honorable Mayor Tac.
Here.
Alderman Novit.
Here.
Alderman Clements.
Here.
Alderman Notes.
Here.
Alderman Power.
Here.
Alderman Levert.
Here.
Alderman Both.
Here.
Alderman Weber.
Here.
Alderman Walder.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have the forum.
Thank you. Please rise and join us for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So we will start with comments by Mayor and I think I'll address the unbelievable completion of Deer Path Bank Lane first and just say thank you to everybody who was involved in that. Huge number of city staff that contributed to that, obviously Public Works Department, Mike Thomas, and I want to give a particular shout out to Bernard Pondexter because he's essentially the mayor of Deer Path Road in my mind. He is such a great representative of the city. He really exhibits, you know, what the culture of our staff is and represents us so well. As do, by the way, all the others. I don't want to minimize that, but he's, he just was exceptional and I think people, you know, really appreciate his efforts. So I just wanted to start with that. The next thing is I'd like to thank everybody who attended the ribbon cutting at Forest Park Beach this weekend. It was a beautiful day. The playground is pretty cool. Special thanks to all the kids who helped break in the new slide swings and climbing features. We would also like to invite you all to join us on Saturday, November 8th for the formal Deer Path Streetscape Bank Lane Enhancement Ribbon Cutting. I think by then everybody's going to sort of forget that it took them nine months to do, but anyway, come enjoy it with us. And lastly, I invite you all to join in the Central Business District Passport from November 8th through 29th. Please shop, collect stamps, and enter to win cash and fabulous prizes from local businesses. All right, the next item on the agenda is comments by City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of City Council. Good evening. Under my report tonight for our community spotlight, I'm thrilled to welcome back Annie McAvini, the founder and executive director of Phila Heart for Kids, which is one of Lake Forest's cherished institutions, also located right here in our Central Business District. Annie and her family started making care packages for children living in foster facilities and fostering a little boy 17 years ago. And since that time, Phila Heart for Kids has grown from helping one child to over 4,000 children in Lake and Cook Counties, homeless and at-risk youth by providing food, critical necessities, life skills, and educational support to empower and build brighter futures. I also, as a parent, want to acknowledge the wonderful job they do in promoting volunteerism amongst the youth within our community, both instilling that sense and importance of volunteerism, but also as a good reminder for all of the kids growing up here that there are many people who don't grow up as fortunate as they do here in Lake Forest. And so with that, Annie, welcome you to the podium.
Thank you. Okay, so. Oh, perfect. Okay, well, you all heard our mission. We started Phila Heart 18 years ago and right now we have over 4,000 children in our program and it started. Can I get you to talk into the mic? Sorry about that. So you did such a beautiful job sharing about Phila Heart for Kids. I can't thank you all enough for inviting us here because the work that we do is critical. We partner with 84 schools and social service agencies to reach the most vulnerable children among us. Right over there, you can see a precious picture of little children. They all live in a foster facility. And all of those little circles are Snowball Wishes. And I wanted to show you what it looks like. We have organizations, we have corporations from Lake Forest from, actually, that they put these in their lobby. And when you look at our Snowball Wishes, you think about most children asking for toys. Our children ask for food boxes. And they ask for things like toiletries for dignity, things like this. And these are the food boxes. And what's so wonderful is our Lake Forest High School students designed our food box coloring sheets. And they go out to about 40 schools in the Lake County area and the kids all decorate them. And then we decorate all of our Thanksgiving boxes and our weekend food bags, and they make them really special for children. So I'm going to flip to the next one. Here's some of our wonderful volunteers. And this is the little boy that made it happen. His name is Mikey. He was the first baby that we took in and he graduated this year from Lake Forest High School. And now he's going to CLC and he's also working at Starbucks. So make sure you go in and say hi to him. And his goal next year, he's going to start applying and his favorite school he wants to attend is DePaul. These are some of our We Care programs that are critical. And you'll notice that we have survival backpacks for homeless children. We have spring break, Thanksgiving, winter break in a box, Project Elf in a Box. All these are very important items to children. We also have environmental programs where we go in and help renovate foster facilities. This year, we renovated a cafeteria to get it up to code, two foster wings, and we're now updating a sensory wing for children. These are some of the things that you can help with. These are our team building corporate group in schools. You can sign up to volunteer at any one of these packing events. Our Thanksgiving in a Box, within five hours, we pack 93,000 servings of food. If we didn't pack these items, we would have an issue with exploitation. Unfortunately, we've had children that have trafficked themselves for food. Situations get desperate and we have to make sure we're here for the children. We also sponsor over $6,800 worth of food weekly to local children and we have a mobile pantry that delivers every week. Okay? And the reality is, people think that children are all signed up for the pit counts and the McKenney-Vento data is not accurate, not even close. The numbers exceed thousands in Lake County. And the problem is if you don't have knowledge about the program or internet access, it doesn't work. So next month, we have a special program in Wahegan where we have a pizza party for children that we know are suffering. And we work with teachers and social workers daily because they're the first line of defense for children and we know that they do their job well. So anyways, we're having a pizza party and a special time for children and it will make all the difference in the world. So you have St. Mary's School packing up snack bags. You have Discover. This is one of our trucks that we deliver food. Here's one of our spring break packing events. We have some darling Lake Bluff children that have participated. Schools reach out to us all the time, so this week we're decorating snack bags and breakfast bags. So this is something that would be in one of the food boxes. It says, "Good morning." We want our children to be present when they receive their box of food. Then we'll have pastas in it. We'll have a lot of shell food. We have to be careful because for children living in garages, we want to make sure that mice don't get to the food. So those children also have 66-gallon quart bins that they can keep their food in. Here's some of our wonderful events. And then we have holiday opportunities. If anyone has a company here that you would like to call and place one of these Frosty the Snowball Wishes, oops, we would love to provide one for you. And what's so wonderful about our program is every child that receives a food box, every child that receives toiletries for dignities, it's a specific child. We don't do giveaways. Every child is registered with our program and that's why we only work with schools and social service agencies. Here's some of our volunteer opportunities. We have volunteer opportunities six days a week, but starting this week, we're open seven days a week because there are so many children in critical need. We've already sponsored over 4,000 winter coats for children. So our normal numbers are over 2,800 children and that are in our Brighter Futures Program. But we also have children that enter our program to get them through the winter months because that's when it's really frightening. We have wonderful programs like Project Smart where you can sign up your children and your company to come in. Those precious little girls live in a foster facility on the right, upper right-hand corner and we have, you know, volunteers coming in. We sponsor over 90,000 school supplies annually and we sponsor school supplies throughout the year. Most people don't realize toiletries for dignity, how important this is, but it's one of the most undervalued items. Most people give out toiletries from hotels. We never do that. Many of our children were trafficked through hotels and it could put them in a state of shock where they really regress and we want them to feel dignified. You'll notice right here, this is shower spray. That's for children that don't have access to showers sometimes up to two weeks. And this is a really important item to them. So when we deliver our food bags every week, we make sure that every child that needs toiletries has them. And these toiletries will last our children about a month and a half. We buy everything by the pallet at reduced rates so we could stretch our dollars further. So for example, I'm just going to step back. When we bought our winter coats, Columbia jackets that were retailing for $400, we got for 15. North Face jackets, we got for $12. It's our job. When a donor donates to us, we're going to make this work and I don't have any shame about asking for more because I want our kids to be successful. And you know, a lot of people say, "Oh, you're so committed to this," but this program hits close to home. I was raised in Lake Forest and so was my family. And one day I went to work and I had a feeling that something was wrong at home. And I don't share this often with people, but I want you to know why I'm doing this. And our babysitter broke my daughter's jaw and she put needles in her back and locked her in the basement in the dark and she was a year old. When my daughter was in sixth grade, her face stopped growing on one side because it was on her growth plate and the doctors misdiagnosed it. And all of her teeth started breaking by the time she was in seventh and eighth grade. She was in and out of the hospital. She was on morphine so many times by the time she hit high school and college. So this is so important to me. My husband and I have taken in 27 children so moms and families could go to work and know their children are safe. And that's why our dedication is so strong. And that's why we work so hard to get the best value for the dollar because children are a gift and they are the next generation and we have to do better. And if we all collaborate and work together and operate with wisdom, we can really succeed. So this year, in 2026, we're starting a roundtable in Lake County for good practices, which is critical because giveaways are not, when you see winter coat giveaway, toy giveaway, anyone can stop and go from site to site and pick up. We have to make sure people are using wisdom when they are donating or when we, when I say when they are donating, when we're giving, when people are investing in us. So that's just a little piece of what Phila Heart for Kids does and I didn't share with you. We also have tutoring. You could see the, see the precious children in that little picnic table? We tutor in Wahegan schools. We tutor in Lake County. We actually just installed a mini library at a foster facility and we have puppy time. I wish I did a picture of this. It's with our puppies. They, they're two and four years old. And Winston weighs six pounds and Eddie's four. And the little kids that live in the foster facility named our, their book club, the tail wagging book club. So, and they hug the puppies and they have wonderful quality time. And then I just want to say one thing. I want to shout out to Lake Forest Police. A little over a year ago, maybe a year and a half ago, we had two young ladies that ran away from a group home. I'm sorry about the ding. I thought I turned this off. And they walked all the way from Phila, to Phila Heart from Wahegan and they walked on the path, on the path at night. But they didn't show up for several days because they were afraid to. And Lake Forest Police did such an instrumental job getting the kids back into their program. It was really scary for the kids because they were going to return them to their families who were severely abusing them. It takes a village, working together. Funds are spread so thin in our state, you can't even imagine what children are going through and how many times children are returned to their families. Or you can't imagine Raven. I should have had her speak today. She entered our program when she was 13 years old. She lived in a group home. Prior to that, she was homeless. She went in many foster homes. Today, she's at the University of Illinois and she is going to graduate next year and she's going to start applying for dental school. And here's a young lady that was homeless that we worked with. So it's not just about going to college. We also provide stopgap funding. So many kids in Illinois lose their funding for brief moments of time and then they leave college. So we provide stopgap funding for our students that are dedicated and working hard so they can finish school or trade school. So I think I said a lot. Let me see how much time. Oh, I went over. I'm sorry. But I truly love what I do and thank you for taking the time to listen to us. Think about our children this holiday season, okay? Share. Just keep sharing our posts because the more we do as a community, the more successful we are. Thank you. I appreciate you.
Thank you so much. I mean, it's really an impressive program that you've put together and we're super proud of what you do. Is there anybody who has any comments or questions? Randy? Okay, well, thank you so.
That's because I didn't stop talking. But now that I see all of you, I expect you all to come in and volunteer, okay? All of you. Thank you so much.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is an opportunity for citizens to address the City Council on non-agenda items. Is there anyone present who would like to address the council at this time? Please come up. If desired, state your name and address.
Which address and name should I use? Thank you. Okay. Actually, that's so funny. I've been looking at different alliterations for Polly. But anyway, Polly Positive Elf One, East Lake Forest One, right? Elf. Anyway, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Just wanted to say so grateful for the Deer Path opening. I wasn't really for everything, but it looks beautiful and I appreciate everyone's hard work. And then thank you for the beach opening. That was just wonderful. And a nod to fire and police who were there, maybe incognito or maybe from above, but it was great. And then finally, sanitation was very great to me these last couple of weeks, so I really appreciated their help. So, and thank you for all your hard work. That's it?
Thank you.
I've got a new nickname.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the Council on Non-Agenda Items? Okay. We will then move on to committee reports. The first report is from the Audit Committee. This will be a report and presentation of the fiscal year 2025 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, presented by Mark Dillon, Audit Committee Chair. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Thank God somebody taught me how to use this beforehand, so. Tonight is our annual update of the Audit Committee where we talk about who we are. We talk about our finance department. We talk about the audit. We present some of the preliminary numbers. I think everybody here has probably seen, gotten the audit from Baker Tilly. We talk about Baker Tilly. And then we give a little bit about what our six foundations have been doing over the year. Just to reiterate and refresh people's minds, the Audit Committee, we are the oversight body for the City Council during the preparation of its annual report. We conduct, if needed, independent reviews that may be requested by the mayor and the council. We meet quarterly, every January, April, July, and August. We review, this is something new. We talked about, a little bit about this last year, the cybersecurity actions on the part of the city and the IT department. We do this annually in January so they can get ready for the planning meetings in March. We solicit and review RFPs for the outside auditor for the city. And we recommend after those RFPs, we recommend a choice for you, the council. The reason I kind of talked about this one is that we will be, begin this process again in January of 2026. So it's been just a, it was just like yesterday that we went through this whole process. If I were to digress a little bit, that whole process was done via Zoom during COVID and it was quite interesting to do all of these RFPs and all of these discussions with, with various accounting firms over Zoom, especially for me because of my first opportunity. And then finally, and I'll talk about it later, but we review and we work with all of the six foundations that have associations with, with the city. So who we are is very, is, is very simple. There's five of us, all citizens from Lake Forest. We got our, we just had our fifth join us after a long hiatus. His name is John Knob. He joined us for the first, his first meeting in October. But the committee really couldn't do anything without the help and our reliance on, on the Finance Department of the city led by Katie Skibby. We depend on these guys. They help us out. They're at every meeting. And, and without them, I don't think that we could do the job that we're, we've been asked to do. But we also have built a pretty good relationship with our external auditor. We have a lot of, a lot of confidence in our auditor at this particular time and their partner in charge, Joe Lightcap, who knows the city very, very, very well. I'm happy to report that the city itself, the Finance Department, has received and continues to receive some very nice reporting achievements from the Government Finance Officers Association. This year, they were given three for the 2024 audit, not 2025. A certificate of achievement in finance reporting for the 46th consecutive year. They also have been awarded the Popular Annual Financial Report. This is the fourth time that has been given. And for 10 times, they've received the Distinguished Budget and Budget Presentation Award. Pretty interesting that of the, in 2023, the little red line at the bottom, the 85,000 municipalities in the, in the country, 354 received all three. Lake Forest is one of those 354. Very impressive indeed. To present the next slide, we're talking about Baker Tilly and the audit. Baker Tilly has provided financial statements that present fairly in all respects, material respects. In other words, a clean or unqualified audit, once again, for the city. There were no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses that were identified. No management letter issues for the 10th straight year. That's very important to the Audit Committee. But the audit itself was on budget for both time and cost as per our agreement with, with Baker Tilly. And for the third year, we saw increased participation from the Finance Department. That has been ever-increasing for the last two or three years based upon their succession planning, so we were very happy to see that. As far as the financials are concerned, the net position of the city has increased $15 million year to year, 24 to 25. Key components of that net position increase are a $5.4 million increase in cash and investments, a $5.2 million increase in, in capital assets. Bonds payable have decreased over the year. And this is the one I like the best. Pension liability on the part of the city decreased $2.7 million. This is, is really due to some very good financial results of the three funds. Police had a, Police Fund had an annual return of 9.78%. Firefighters, 10.5%. And IMRF had a 9.2%. Very good. I understand that the city has a goal for funding all three, especially firefighters and police. By a certain year in future, this does get there, help us get there. So very, very pleased with that result. As far as the capital assets are concerned, capital assets increased 4.6. All of that was in, most of the, more than that, 5.1 million of it was, was in government activities. Really what it is, is we moved 13.3 million from construction in progress to capital assets. Primarily, all that is, is, is the Beach Pathway and the Deer Path Athletic Park. So it was all in construction in 2024, moved over to capital assets, and then the rest is depreciation. You notice I'm not going to talk about business activities. They're, they're almost de minimis, but they have been very, very even keel for the last few years. Revenue over expenses, again, 14.9, revenues greater than expenses. Revenues did in fact decrease, $7.6 million. Don't worry about that. 12.3 of that is the grants for the IDOT pumping station, which went away. So really, in effect, all things considered, revenues went up a little bit. Expenses were increased primarily, some of the larger parts of that expense increase were pension adjustment expenses that we had. Again, small changes in, in business type activities. Business activities are primarily golf course and water treatment classes. Next one is kind of new this year. I forgot to change that. I apologize. Got some charts here that, that show the distribution of governmental, of the revenues. And the reason I wanted to show this is that really from a distribution point of view, nothing really changed, even though it's skewed in 2024. The reason it's skewed in 2024 is because of that 12.3 million in grants in, that you'll see at the top of the chart for 2024. Move it over to 2025 and it drops from 15% to 4% for grants, much so therefore 25 really presents a more normalized distribution of revenue, one that we should probably see next year as well. That's the reason we've, I wanted to put that in there. I also wanted to put this in for the next chart, which is our financial, our governmental expenses of $66 million. Really, there's no change. It's pretty static. There are no significant outliers on expenses year to year. 73% of our expenses continue to be personnel and HR costs. To turn to the real cool stuff, the foundation highlights. I'm sitting here trying to think about what to say to all the, for all these guys. All the participants this year showed solid financial performance and really good activity reporting. And I looked through the, through these six and I kind of tried to decide which one is the crown jewel. And every time I look at one of them, that becomes the crown jewel, then that one and that one. Each one does, has a purpose within this, what it does for the city. Parks and Rec, Mike over here, I worked with him on this to be able to report that they raised over 50% of the funds for the Beach Pathway, which was, the mayor just talked about the dedication of that. And over, they gave over $80,000 to other programs. Important for the Audit Committee was the fact that the Parks and Rec Foundation successfully implemented more stringent financial processes. That we worked with them on it over a couple of years and we're very happy with how that turned out. Croya Foundation, this is now each one I'm talking about, the crown jewel of Lake Forest youth. They increased their financial reserves for the second year in a row. They've implemented with the Board of Croya a succession planning process that was not there before. Currently, they are raising funds to remodel the Croya Kitchen, which we understand is one of the highlights of people who, the kids who go to Croya. They love their kitchen. Lake Forest, Lake Bluff Senior Citizens Foundation will again provide about $150,000 or more $1,000 to Dickinson Hall's budget. I think the important thing to note here is that 25 was the first year for the full funding of the senior advocate position. 26, fiscal year 26 will be the first full year of that funding for the senior advocate position. And that was, worked out with Jason and the city and I think it's a very good, very good development. Gordon Foundation, their, their assets have increased to $10.5 million. They received a clean audit. Not all of our foundations get, have audits, but Gordon has one every year because of its size. Probably what I want to note here is the committee continues to be impressed every year with, with Gordon's. year with with Gordon's controls, their planning process, and their risk management. Every single year, it improves, and likewise with Ragdale. Ragdale, their net assets increased to almost $8 million, but I think the best part about this is the first payment of $300,000 by Ragdale was made to the city on the on the $1.5 million loan made to Ragdale. That payment was made in March of '25. The next payment will be due will be again come in at March of '26. Again, they're current they're having a capital campaign. They've raised $4 million. Their their goal is 6.6. And like Gordon, the committee was has been very impressed with the improvement that Ragdale has shown in their direction and their planning, and quite frankly, that coincides with the naming of their new direct executive director. So we're very pleased to see how that that goes, and I think that we'll see better continued improvement there. The Police Foundation, interestingly enough, is out has has reported that they are, for the first time, looking for corporate sponsors. They also are are working on getting foundation money for a new police K-9. And interestingly enough, I don't know if it was the first, but they have you seen the black golf cart running around at various events? That golf cart came through the foundation. It was donated by a citizen here. So it's pretty interesting how that arrived at at the Police Department. So with that, I would entertain any questions, try and answer any questions you might have.
Are there any questions or comments for Mr. Dillon? Alderman Weber.
I just wanted to say, Mr. Dillon, thanks so much for coming tonight and presenting this information. We're so pleased to see the results of, again, emphasizing our very well-run city.
Thank you.
Are there others? Having none, thank you so much for the presentation, and I'd just like to make a comment on that. I'm particularly happy to see the report on Ragdale. I think that's a big turnaround, and I'm quite impressed by that. Very good. All right. So at this time, is there anybody in the public that would like to comment on the presentation? All right, having none, I'd like the council to acknowledge receipt of the audit report for the year ended April 30, 2025. Is there a motion?
So moved.
And this is a roll call vote.
Alderman Clemmons.
Aye.
Alderman Notes.
Aye.
Alderman Powers.
Aye.
Alderman Levert.
Aye.
Alderman Bothfeld.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Alderman Walder.
Aye.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Eight yea, zero nay, motion carries.
Very good. The next report is from the Finance Committee. This will be presented by Katie Skibby, Finance Director. Consideration of an ordinance restating and reaffirming ordinance number 2024-045, the self-limiting ordinance, final reading.
Thank you. This is the second reading of the changes to the debt cap ordinance. This was discussed at the October 20 Finance Committee meeting, and the first reading was at the October 20 City Council meeting. The city has historically assumed modest annual increases to the debt service cap. This supports our long-range financial planning, our long-range forecasting for capital, and helps anticipate future debt capacity as projects' costs continues to rise. Currently, the police station bond will use all future available debt capacity until 2032. The current ordinance does not allow staff to assume increases in the municipal price index, which is what we use to measure increases in inflation. This limits the ability for us to plan or structure future financing efficiently. The proposed amendment allows staff to estimate future growth in the municipal price index up to 3%. It does still limit the levy to the amount needed for debt service, and it also codifies the exclusion of the self-supported debt. So this is debt that is supported by the Water Fund or the Gulf Fund or Enterprise Funds and is not supported by taxpayer dollars. The overall financial impact to this change is with the police bonds. This will allow us to do financing at the lowest overall cost. Without the amendment, we have to hold the cap flat through 2040, and it results in approximately 1.1 million additional dollars in debt service. As you can see, it pushes some of the additional debt service towards the end of the life of the bonds. This amendment provides flexibility and maintains fiscal discipline in our planning. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions or comments for Director Skibby? Okay, hearing none. Is there anybody in the public that would like to make comment on this matter? Seeing none, then we will move to ask for a motion to approve an ordinance restating and reaffirming ordinance number 2024-045, the self-limiting ordinance, final reading. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
This will be a roll call vote.
Alderman Notes.
Aye.
Alderman Powers.
Aye.
Alderman Levert.
Aye.
Alderman Bothfeld.
Aye.
Alderman Weber.
Aye.
Alderman Walder.
Aye.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Clemmons.
Aye.
Eight yea, zero nay, motion carries.
Very good. The next item on the agenda will also be presented by Director Skibby. This is determination of a non-binding estimate of the amount of revenue to be generated from property taxes for the 2025 calendar year and establishment of December 1, 2025 as a public hearing date, if required, in accordance with the Truth in Taxation statute.
I think we skipped something. Is that okay?
Mr. Mayor, we need to go back to item two under Finance.
Did I miss?
Yes.
Missed? Okay. Sorry about that. Good, stuck to the back. Okay. We'll go backwards a little bit here. The next item on the on the agenda will be presented by Director Skibby. This is consideration of an ordinance providing for the issuance of not to exceed $20,350,000 general obligation bonds of the City of Lake Forest, Lake County, Illinois, for the purpose of financing capital improvements in and for the city, including but not limited to renovation of a building for use as a public safety facility, including the site work, design, engineering related thereto, providing for the levy and collection of a direct annual tax efficient to pay the principal and interest on said bonds, authorizing the sale of said bonds to the purchaser thereof, second reading.
Thank you, Mayor Tack. On October 6, City Council approved bids for the new police station project and approved two additional project options for a total project cost of $26,978. This price did include a $1 million contingency. And at that same meeting, City Council approved the first reading of the parameters bond ordinance. This evening, City Council will consider the second and final reading of the bond ordinance. This ordinance authorizes staff to sell the bonds at a future date once specific parameters are met, such as maximum par value, interest rate, and amortization period. This slide outlines the financing model, which includes 20 million in bond financing and a little over 6 million in fund reserves. It also estimates the cost of issuance at 350,000. As those costs come down, we will not spend $350,000. And then it also outlines the tax impact to a $1 million homeowner. In 2024, we did increase the tax levy by $500,000 to start to phase in that increase, and a $1 million homeowner paid $55 additional in property taxes that year. And the 2025 levy, it is a $533,000 increase, which will be another $58 of property taxes as the increase in 2025. And then the bonds will be fully phased in in 2026 when there is a $628,924 increase, which will increase the tax taxes of a $1 million home to $69.25. Overall, moving forward, a $1 million home will pay an additional $183.08 a year. We've seen this graph many times now, but I wanted to bring it one more time since the council reviewed the preliminary debt service model on October 20. The Fed did decrease rates by 25 basis points. This graph has been updated to show an issuance with a 3.57% true interest cost. What we had looked at before had a 3.83% interest true interest cost, so this has resulted in a decrease in debt service of about $210,000. Moving forward, assuming this is approved this evening, staff will be sending the preliminary official statement to Moody's probably early next week. We will have a Moody's rating call in November, and then we anticipate the bond sale in January. The Federal Open Market Committee will be meeting again in December, and right now it looks like there will be another rate decrease before we will be issuing the bonds. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Are there any questions for Director Skibby? Okay. Alderman Bothfeld.
When you mentioned it's $180 yearly increase per home, how long would that go on for?
It will go on for the 15 years.
15 years, okay. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Alderman Powers.
Katie, thanks for your diligence on this, and and same to Diane Hall and really the whole team. You guys have been pretty consistent in keeping us abreast of what's going on. Now, this is a generational move for the city as it relates to the police facility, and there's been lots of questions, and appreciate your, you know, availability to continue to answer those. And I think this is a testament of the financial discipline the city has had that started way before I got here, and and prior councils and prior mayors and even prior city managers that have kind of followed the same methodology really puts us in a in a comfortable place. So thanks for what you do.
Okay, other comments or questions? Is there anybody from the public that would like to comment on this matter? Okay. Hearing none, at this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve an ordinance providing for the issuance of not to exceed $20,350,000 of general obligation bonds of the City of Lake Forest, Lake County, Illinois, for the purpose of financing capital improvements in and for the city, including but not limited to renovation of a building for use as a public safety facility, including the site work, design and engineering related thereto, providing for the levy and collection of a direct annual tax efficient to pay the principal and interest on said bonds, and authorizing the sale of said bonds to the purchaser thereof, final reading. Have a motion.
So moved.
This will be a roll call vote.
Alderman Powers.
Aye.
Alderman Levert.
Aye.
Alderman Bothfeld.
Aye.
Alderman Weber.
Aye.
Alderman Walder.
Aye.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Clemmons.
Aye.
Alderman Notes.
Aye.
Eight yea, zero nay, motion carries.
Okay. Before we go on to the next item, I have a procedural question. Is there some reason why we couldn't have worked on this question when I inadvertently read it before question number two?
You mean, do the motion the?
Yeah, we in other words, I read out number three, having had number two stick to the back of the page. Couldn't we have just voted on it?
Oh, I we needed to issue the bonds. Oh, oh, this is the non-binding estimate. We could have. The previous two needed to be done in a particular order. One and two had to be.
So two had to be after one.
Yes.
But three didn't have to be after two.
No.
Correct.
No, it couldn't.
Okay. Thank you. Saving face here. Anyway, so let's let's go back to this. The next item on the agenda is also presented by Director Skibby. This is determination of a non-binding estimate for the amount of revenue to be generated from property taxes for the 2025 calendar year and establishment of December 1, 2025 as a public hearing date, if required, in accordance with the Truth in Taxation statute. Director Skibby.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Tack. State law requires that each taxing district has to estimate its proposed tax levy at least 20 days before opting the levy or adopting, excuse me, the levy ordinance. This estimate determines whether public notice and hearing are required, and this process ensures transparency and compliance with state statutes. Tonight, the tax levy estimated will the tax levy estimate will be formalized, and a public hearing date will be set in the Truth in Taxation hearing. The estimate approved today is a non-binding estimate and can be changed before final approval. After tonight's meeting, the Finance Committee will have a comprehensive review of the tax levy at the November 10 Capital Budget Workshop. It will then come back to City Council for first reading on November 18 and for final reading on December 1. At this time, staff does not anticipate the need for a Truth in Taxation hearing. A hearing is only required if the city levy is anticipated to increase by 5% or more. Here is our non-binding property tax levy assessment estimate. This includes the assessed value estimates from Lake County Assessor's Office. It also includes the police and fire pension funding per our actuarial valuations and the 2020 pension funding policy. It includes debt service levies based on existing bond ordinances, and and it does include the estimated 2025 police station bond issue. Additionally, it includes the capital improvements fund levy, which is aligned with the fiscal year '26 through '35 year forecast, and you'll see a 2.9% PTEL or Property Tax Extension Limitation Law increase on the library and parks and recreation levies. But the estimate of new growth also affects the general fund and the library's operating levies. Based on conversations with the council from the last meeting, the 2025 tax levy has a 2% operating increase. This is below the inflation level of 2.9%, and is below anticipated needed salary adjustments. This reflects continued fiscal discipline and cost containment. This also includes abating the new police station bonds to limit the total tax increase year over year to $300,000. This reduces the 2025 levy impact for the police station bonds to approximately $33 for a $1 million homeowner. And then just one last thing I will point out is you'll see that the Parks and Rec line on this slide says 2.84, not 2.9. This is due to a portion of the levy that is related to specific purposes that doesn't increase with CPI, so that reduces the overall increase a little bit. And the library's increase you'll see is 3.77 because we allocate some of the new growth to the library, so the difference between the 2.9 CPI and the 3.77 is that new growth. And if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Are there questions or comments for Director Skibby? Yes, Alderman Weber.
Director Skibby, I just wanted, again, to compliment the team and as well as the council hearing this presentation, of course, at our last meeting, but that we are really being fiscally responsible and looking to keep our increases at a minimal, knowing that it's probably not sustainable forever, but again, being sensitive to the rising costs and our capital expenditures.
Very good. Other comments or questions? Is there anybody in the public who would like to comment on this matter? Okay, hearing none. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve determination of a non-binding estimate of the amount of revenue to be generated from property taxes for the 2025 calendar year and establishment of December 1, 2025 as a public hearing date, in accordance with the Truth in Taxation statute. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
This will also be a roll call vote.
Alderman Levert.
Aye.
Alderman Bothfeld.
Aye.
Alderman Weber.
Aye.
Alderman Walder.
Aye.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Clemmons.
Aye.
And Notes.
Aye.
Alderman Powers.
Aye.
Eight yea, zero nay, motion carries.
Good. Thank you, Director Skibby. The next committee report is from the Personnel Administration Compensation Committee. This will be presented by Ben Riesler, Director of Human Resource. Approval of proposed changes to the City of Lake Forest Health Insurance Plan for Plan Year '26.
Thank you, Mayor Tack. Council members, I appreciate the opportunity to present. One major change, I shouldn't say major change, one, the only change for our One major change, I shouldn't say major change, one, the only change for health insurance plans this year, that being how we are allowing employees or plan members access to GLP-1 drugs. So I've got a few slides just to run through the reason why we are requesting to make this change and then the cost implications associated with that. So the PCA committee met a couple of weeks ago to talk about this proposed change. And really what we're hoping to do is sort of control plan costs by introducing some additional thresholds or touchpoints that a employee would need to have with their provider or with their physician to ensure that the GLP-1 drugs that they are taking are not necessarily a long-term experience that they have and hopefully would be looking to make some lifestyle changes associated with these drugs. So just some background, the city joined the inter-personnel or intergovernmental personnel benefits consortium in 2024. Prior to that, the city had a self-insured health insurance plan. And just some additional metrics for you. This year, we have 227 employees and/or retirees enrolled and a total of 728 total participants, those being dependents. And currently, we have 27 participants, or about 3.7% of all enrollees using GLP-1 drugs. So what we're looking at for premium increases for Plan Year 2026, which follows the calendar year, not necessarily aligning with the city's fiscal year, is a 9.1% increase for costs associated with our HDHP and PPO plans and a 6.2% increase for our HMO plans. For some additional context, in terms of all IPBC members, about 170 communities in total, the average increase for PPO plans is 11.1% and again, 6.2% for the HMO plans. Some communities were seeing increases in the neighborhood of 16%, so the city is fortunate to be below that average. But really, the drivers for the increases in costs have to do with hospital consolidation as well as the GLP-1 weight loss drugs, specifically Zepbound and Wegovy. And some additional information for you, through August of this year, which was the most up-to-date information we could have, we have about $3.5 million in planned costs and of that is about 4.2% dedicated to GLP-1 drug prescription costs. So the specific program that employees would need to enroll in in order to have access to these GLP-1 drugs is called Encircle RX. And the goal of it is to promote lifestyle changes to produce prescription dosage or hopefully transition off these drugs entirely, given their costly nature. Some additional information, as requested by the PCA committee, was to understand what the requirements were to take part in this Encircle RX program. So before someone would be prescribed these drugs under the proposed changes, they would need to have a BMI of 32 or greater or a BMI of 27 or equal to or greater than 27 with two comorbidities before starting treatment. They would also need a provider to attest to the patient having to try to modify their behavior prior to being prescribed these drugs, which would also include a diet for at least three months before first coverage review. As I mentioned, hopefully through this program, participation seeking lifestyle and behavioral modification changes, which include four weigh-ins and four app engagements every 30 days while on the program. And then in order to maintain access or in order to have your prescription renewed, you would need, or a employee would have to see a 5% or more decrease in body weight loss from their pre-therapy measurement at the PA renewal. So in terms of existing subscribers, they would be excluded from the BMI requirements, but they must meet all other requirements. And then new subscribers or new people receiving these prescription drugs must meet the BMI and all other requirements. In terms of the comorbidities that would be used to determine access to these drugs, I've listed what those would be per the Encircle RX. In terms of cost impact with these proposed changes, if we were to do nothing or maintain the status quo this year, the city is still seeing a premium impact, a premium increase of $375,826, so about an 8.6% increase. And per the discussion at the PCA committee, they wanted to try and reduce those costs understandably. And so what staff and PCA are recommending is option three to modify access for all folks looking to have access to the GLP-1 drugs. So that would result in only a 7.1% increase over current plan year premium costs or $336,771. So in terms of if the city were to maintain status quo and not change access to the GLP-1 drugs, you see what that total premium cost would be in option one. And then with option three, what PCA and staff are proposing, it would save about $40,000 by instituting these changes or the Encircle RX program for GLP-1 users. So again, we're seeking your concurrence or seeking your approval to implement option three for GLP-1 drugs and the Encircle RX program.
Okay. Before we get into questions or comments from City Council, I would like to say that we had a fairly vigorous discussion about this issue at the committee meeting. And I would tell you that as a physician, I find the entry requirements for use of GLPs to be remarkably low. A BMI of 27, I have a BMI of 26. And I have hypertension and so I could qualify for GLPs. To me, this almost seems like no barrier at all. And we talked about this issue. These drugs are hugely expensive. They're currently greatly overutilized and we know this. And the overutilization is a combination of many factors. It's much of it is patient-driven, patient demand, because quite honestly, it's a very easy way to lose weight. Physicians don't act much as a barrier, unfortunately, because when patients demand something, it takes time to talk them out of it and that doesn't really happen very often anymore. And so we, you know, we debated, you know, this, what we're recommending or what the committee is recommending is really a minimal savings. But there was a sense of the committee that we had to start someplace. We didn't have the knowledge or the background research for the committee to evaluate yet to change the criteria. But there was a general sense that next year, we need to look seriously at creating a higher threshold for entry into prescription of these drugs. And I think that's very legitimate. I think, you know, medical science and data will support us doing that, that we're not taking meaningful benefits away from people if we do it. But as of right now, we don't have the information or the background to make such a recommendation. Therefore, the committee voted for this option. So I just wanted to provide, you know, the council and the community with sort of the background that this is, this is an ongoing, very serious consideration and research topic for this committee and that next year, there will likely be a different approach to this. And time is helpful too, because other things will become available. These are all very new drugs and side effects and other things that are associated with their use will become more evident in the next year or so, as well as sort of revised recommendations, you know, for use. So anyway, are there others that have questions or comments? Alderman Notes.
Thank you, Mayor. From my perspective, a $40,000 savings is honestly not worth having this conversation. I do fervently believe in the mayor's point that guiding, guide rails need to be in place and understood. The city, I think, needs to understand what benefits its employees and family members under the plan have been getting from the use of the drug and really understanding what those parameters need to be going for. And I kind of feel like we're rushing to make a decision in time for the annual enrollment process for again, a negligible benefit. I would support the status quo with the understanding that all efforts be made to again, really understand where we are today, what the benefit is we are getting today and what needs to be done to tighten it up and really make it most beneficial, not only for the employees and their families benefiting from it, but from the residents who are, you know, financially carrying that cost.
Other comments? Alderman Walther.
So interestingly enough, I was at the doctor this morning and he said, is there anything of interest on the agenda tonight? And I said, yeah, and I talked a little bit about this. Northwestern physician, and his comment to me was, oh, Northwestern has just told me as a practicing professional in their organization that the BMI level that we're going to establish internally for our recommendations is 35. And so most of our employees are going to go to hospitals that are in the northwest suburbs of Chicago. And so it would be an interesting exercise to do a study of what their internal recommendations are on behalf of not only their patients, but on the insurance companies who service those facilities. And then that could help us guide the appropriate recommendations and potentially drive additional savings that might be an outcome of that. So just a comment there.
Well, right. And as noted, that is something that potentially we can do over the course of the next year. Not available to us currently in the consideration of what's in front of us. Other comments or questions? Yes, Alderman Levert.
Thank you. I've got a couple of questions. I'll start with that one. How did you come up with the parameters, the minimum parameters of BMI?
So that's a great question. Those are established by the IPBC pool or the Board of Directors. So they are certainly monitoring the cost for GLP-1 drugs and seeing more and more people take these and seeing the high dollar amount attached to each prescription. So it is an IPBC decision what those requirements are. It's not as though each individual community can elect different thresholds at this time. But as Mayor said, we would be talking with our fellow members and the Board of Directors over the next year to see how things shake out with GLP-1 prescriptions and if there might be room for additional thresholds or higher thresholds.
So, which leads to a question, I'm sorry to interrupt, is for our participation, can we have a threshold that are different than the program?
Not at the, not at this time.
Okay.
Okay. That was my follow-up. But the next question I have is, does use of these drugs go on forever? Or is there a certain time period? For instance, if you, if you lose a significant amount of weight and you stop using it, does that cause you to lose all the benefit of the time you are on it? Or I guess are these forever drugs?
Dr. Riesler, do you want to answer that?
I wouldn't answer it from a physician perspective, but with the limited information that we have on the longitudinal studies with these drugs, if someone is on these prescriptions and stops taking them, they do tend to regain the weight without lifestyle or behavioral modifications.
Okay. And the last question is, what is the out-of-pocket cost for employees for a drug like this?
I believe it's a 90/10 split. I think on average, the annual cost for these drugs, for a prescription is about $13,000 a year. So roughly 10% of that.
And they pay 10%? Okay, thank you.
Other comments? Yes.
To his point about his doctor saying he have to have 35, can an employee go in and say, yeah, but it's 27? And force his doctor to give him the, or encourage or push his doctor to give him a prescription?
I'm not, I'm not sure. I think that would depend on the relationship between the person and their physician.
It's an insurance provider issue. If the criteria is 27 with two comorbidities, you meet the criteria and therefore, prescription to be approved.
Even though the doctor...
Well, the doctor, that's Northwestern...
Yeah, I know.
...system.
Yeah.
That's not our insurance coverage that we have. So it's kind of apple and oranges.
And they are self-insured. And so the issue that you're addressing is, so can I go to my doctor and say, yeah, but my insurance will pay for it because here's my criteria? And the doctor says, oh, okay, then here you go.
That's right.
That's exactly...
That's what I'm asking.
...in many interactions and that's why we're having this conversation. But again, it doesn't really apply to this year.
Okay.
But this, because we're having this conversation this way, because this is the first time that, you know, we've been faced with this. And it's a really meaningful thing that, you know, we need to spend healthcare dollars carefully. And, you know, sometimes increased access isn't better healthcare. So I think we need to think of that going forward. Anybody else? Alderman Powers again.
Yeah, I would just add real quickly, I don't disagree with anything that's been said. But I do want to highlight the success that we had last year. I believe we successfully expanded benefits for all of our employees. We reduced our costs and we improved our service, which never happens. That's kind of the triple crown of healthcare and benefits. That last year, through this consortium and through a lot of Jason's work and through the HR team, we were able to achieve that. So it looks like on the surface, you know, 7.1% increase is certainly meaningful, especially when we're, you know, trying to manage the inflationary costs of all aspects of healthcare. But because of that success last year, it's certainly reduced a bit. And this isn't going to go away because it's going to be an ongoing challenge that the committee is going to have to be evaluating on a regular basis. So staying on top of it, Ben, we appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Alderman Clemens.
Excuse me, I'd be in favor of option three. And I think we would learn a lot from that option to see what worked, what didn't. So I would be in favor of that over option two or one.
Alderman Levert.
I have one more question. So if we don't get to determine the BMI index, like the discussion has brought out, that's determined by another body, then are we, do we need to conform to whatever this group decides? Or should we be looking at other options as cost savings and decisions are being made on what's appropriate for us?
I think I would expect a lot of the pool members to be asking these same questions and this be a discussion across the pool. One of the benefits of joining IPBC was the pool in and of itself, being able to disperse costs a little bit or share those costs a little bit more across pool members. But I'm just not sure at this time, given the city's, you know, being less than a year into the pool, what sort of flexibility we would have and other members would have to establish these plans. But I do think it is to our benefit to be an IPBC versus a self-insured plan, as Alderman Powers just said.
Sure.
Mayor, I'm overhearing Alderman Clemens making a point. I just want to clarify, it's not a, we need to spend, we need to save the additional $40,000 to do a study for next year. We could do the study, we're going to do the study no matter what. And it's just a function of whether we're taking the, spending the additional $40,000 today to implement these other matters. And I don't know if Alderman Clemens was distinguishing those two points or not, but I, they're not correlated.
It was better than two and one.
Yep.
It's highly scientific.
My, I'm also in favor of option three and I think one of the things is this is an issue that's not going to go away. So option three is actually almost kind of a baby step. And it allows our employees to better understand and not be hit with a more, a significant financial burden a year from now or two years from now. So this is a nice way to transition.
Very good. Other questions or comments? Is there anybody in the audience that would like to comment on this matter? Please feel free to do so. You know the rules.
How about LE1 Alf? Anyway, I can't think of a street name with an E. But, anyway, I am deeply concerned about this, just from a person standpoint. People struggling with their weight are already struggling with keeping all kinds of emotional barriers, and they're already struggling with all kinds of extra expenses, and just adding things like making them get on a scale four times, whatever that period is. I don't, I don't think that's going to help their mental health. I really don't. I agree with things like changing behavior and food. I know too many people who struggle with their weight and have tried all kinds of things, including dangerous surgeries, which have destroyed their lives, including drugs, and they've tried to up things or whatever. But I think forcing people to check in like this, I'm deeply concerned. And then, the next step is, well, if somebody's using recreational drugs, are we going to make them check in because they're on methadone or whatever? I don't understand that whole process, insurance-wise. Are we going to make people check in for, I'm concerned that we might make people check in for things like, I don't know, dentistry or whatever it is to just verify the fact that, "Well, you are brushing your teeth every day, so we're going to go ahead and pay for your dental." Or people who are smoking and trying to stop smoking, "Well, how many cigarettes did you take today?" And this makes all that information more public. So, I just have grave concerns about this. I don't understand why it needs to happen right now and why it can't wait for the discussion. But, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, hang on. We are going to move to ask for a motion to approve option three, Health Insurance Plan Modifications, Plan 2026, for GLP-1 prescriptions. This is modify for all. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. This will be a roll call vote.
Alderman Baathfeld.
Yes.
Alderman Weber.
Aye.
Alderman Walther.
Aye.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Clemmons.
Aye.
Alderman Notes.
No.
Alderman Powers.
Aye.
Alderman Levert.
Aye.
Seven yea, one nay. Motion carries.
Excellent. All right. We will move on, and thank you, Mr. Reesler. Great presentation and a nice discussion, folks. The next is items from the vote consideration. As always, I'm going to read all the items. If there's any item that you would like removed or taken separately, please notify me upon completion of reading. Item one, approval of the Monday, October 20, 2025, city council meeting minutes. Item two, approval of the check register for the period of September 20 to October 17, 2025. Item three, consideration of a request to waive the fidelity bond requirement in connection with holding the raffles in the city of Lake Forest with the School of St. Mary. Item four, approval to authorize city manager to award a contract for tree pruning for fiscal year 2026 to advance tree care for an amount not to exceed $83,000. Item five, authorization to dispose of city property to the highest bidder, Miguel Camarena, for the sale of 2010 Chevy Express Arbach Mobility in the amount of $7,505. Item six, approval of a grant of easement to Commonwealth Edison for the Waukegan and Wesley Intersection Project and authorization of staff to execute the easement and related documentation. Item seven, consideration of a recommendation from the Plan Commission in support of approval of the Elm Tree Road subdivision at 1310 Lake Road and 1235 Elm Tree Road through a special use permit. Waive first reading, grant final approval of an ordinance. And eight, consideration of an ordinance approving the recommendation from the Zoning Board of Appeals for 491 Buena Road. First reading if desired, final approval. Is there any item that councilman would like removed or taken separately? Okay, hearing none. May I have a motion to approve the eight omnibus items as presented?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Weber.
Aye.
Alderman Walther.
Aye.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Clemmons.
Aye.
Alderman Notes.
Aye.
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 Alderman Baathfeld.
Aye.
Eight yea, zero nay. Motion carries.
Excellent. The next item is old business. Consideration of a recommendation from staff to authorize negotiations with Tower North relating to a ground lease for a Monopole cell tower at the city's Compost Center, 1381 Kennedy Road. By motion, this will be presented by Catherine Sarnia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This item is before you tonight for direction. Over the last year, the council has expressed a great deal of interest in finding a way to enhance wireless capacity, quality, coverage throughout the entire community. So, we are here tonight looking for your direction. Like to spend a few minutes talking about, just looking back a year, how did we get here? Talking a little bit about the Compost Center site, summarizing the proposals that we received last week from two tower builders in response to an RFP we issued, reviewing the benefits and disadvantages or challenges each of those offer, provide you with a staff recommendation, and then ask you for direction. Action to date, just about a year ago, the Plan Commission, at your direction, considered a code amendment that would add a permitted tower site at the Telegraph Road train station and a permitted tower site at the Compost Center. The Plan Commission held two public hearings, one in October and one in November. Those public hearings were very well attended, despite the fact that the council had directed the Plan Commission to consider this matter because of repeated complaints we've received from residents and businesses about poor service from, as a result of contacts, multiple contacts from tower builders and wireless service providers expressing interest in helping us solve that problem, and really based on your own, some of your own personal experiences. You directed the Plan Commission to have that discussion. This room was pretty full, and the Plan Commission heard quite a bit of opposition. And really, it focused generally in two areas. One, there was doubt as to whether there really were, was a service issue, whether there was a need for increased coverage or increased quality. And second, there was concern about whether Everett and Waukegan Road, the train station or anywhere around there was an appropriate location for a new cell tower. I guess I'd add a third one, too. Questions were raised about whether a cell tower or some different technology could meet the community's needs. At the second public hearing, the Plan Commission forwarded a recommendation to the council to deny a code amendment to allow a tower at the train station, at the Telegraph Road train station, and recommended approval of a code amendment to allow a standalone tower at the city's Compost Center. The council heard both of those recommendations in open session. You also heard public testimony. In response to that testimony, the council tabled any action and directed staff to engage a consultant to conduct a wireless coverage study for the entire community. In July of this year, the council heard a report from that wireless consultant, and that report confirmed that there are deficiencies in our communities. In particular, in the southwest quadrant, primarily the fourth ward, really focused on Everett and Waukegan Road, there was a serious deficiency. And our current code language that speaks to telecommunication facilities, whether it be rooftop or standalone towers, interestingly, doesn't identify any permitted sites within that southwest quadrant. And we talked about why that might have been, density of development, the number of devices or how frequent many people are using them, but for whatever reason, there was not an approved site in that location. After the council heard the presentation from the consultant, you directed staff to move forward, or actually, you, the council approved an amendment to the code to designate the Compost Center as a permitted site for a standalone tower, really removing barriers to a tower building company or a provider who would want to come in and make that proposal. After you approved that amendment, our public works staff took the initiative to have a survey done to identify the floodway and floodplain areas at the Compost Center site, because we know much of that site is impacted. With that information, we did issue an RFP. In addition to posting that on all of our normal sites, we personally sent that to all of our contacts, the wireless providers who had contacted us, the tower builders. We know from our wireless service providers that they also sent it out to the companies that they work for. As I said, last week, we received two proposals in response to that RFP. Reminder about the amendment you approved. This is Route 60, the railroad tracks. This is our Compost Center. The amendment the council approved, based on the information we had available in July, approved this outlined area as a permitted location for a standalone telecommunication tower. To orient you, this is the water tower right here. Based on the further study that was done, just in general terms, the colored areas are impacted by floodplain or floodway. To orient you, this is the water tower. This area is our recycling center and the compost, or the recycling activity area and the compost center. These areas that are clear are the areas that are available for construction of a tower. Public Works staff, Michael Thomas, Director of Public Works, Matt Brugioni, Superintendent of Public Works, Jeeves, I can't remember his first name, Director of the Water Plant. We all met out on site and really walked the site and looked at where within that permitted area would make the most sense to install a tower. The area we're looking at is right in this area. It's furthest from any residential development on the west side of the railroad tracks. There's a berm that extends along the south and east side of the Compost Center site, and it's fairly easily accessible from an existing road. A tower builder would construct a tower and would also need an area for ground equipment. So, with this information that we provided in advance as part of the RFP, again, we received two proposals. You do have this in your packet, but just in summary, we received proposals from Tower North, a tower building company, and from Harmony Towers. Clearly, in staff's determination, Tower North presented the proposal that made the most sense. Importantly, this is not a contract. We have not negotiated a contract yet. Because of the council's involvement and interest in this topic, we're coming to you before we spend the time and money to work with the city attorney to negotiate a contract. So, this is their, essentially, their offer at this point. Tower North, we would receive an upfront payment of $125,000, $25,000 when we enter into the lease, and $100,000 when they begin to construct the tower. Harmony Towers had no upfront payment. Harmony Towers proposes a lease rate to the city for the ground lease. The city would not own the tower. The tower building company would own the tower, a ground lease of $1,250,000 a month. And we would receive revenue sharing from the ideally three providers that would be on the tower. 30% of the revenue that Tower North would receive from each of their providers, the city would receive that per provider, per month. And you do have an estimate of what Tower North expects their contracts to be, about $2,800 to $4,000. Harmony Towers put forward a flat fee of $400 a month with no escalation. Tower North did provide three non-binding letters of intent from the three major carriers, Verizon, T-Mobile, AT&amp;T. None were provided by Harmony Towers. We would anticipate, as the council directed, that the tower can accommodate three major providers, potentially some additional lower-level providers. Estimated timeline for both is about 12 months. The Tower North proposal was more detailed, we believe they built in some time that perhaps we could help them to expedite. The lease area is pretty close, 60 by 60, 75 by 75, pretty close with both of them. Tower height, the permitted tower height is 160. Referrals, Tower North did provide referrals for both a community and for two providers. Those referrals were contacted. Harmony North did not provide any referrals. Benefits, overview benefit clearly is the addition of a third wireless provider at the Compost Center. Currently, AT&amp;T and T-Mobile are located at the Compost Center. T-Mobile is located below the bulb, below the tank, at about 80 feet. Our water tower is 160 feet. The addition of a third provider, the relocation of both AT&amp;T and T-Mobile would allow them the opportunity to upgrade their equipment, as they do periodically anyway, but certainly would allow T-Mobile to be at a higher elevation. So, coverage would be improved, certainly in the vicinity of Route 60 and Waukegan Road. And not insignificantly, antennas, equipment, and the cables that go through the cylinder of the tower would be eliminated. As you all know, the city's water tower is an essential piece of infrastructure. Although we can't quantify what that savings might be over time, it, removal of the heavy equipment, the antenna arrays, would remove weight from the water tower, and removing the cables from the cylinder would really facilitate our crews from climbing up into that water tower in a very tight space where it gets very warm and doing what they need to do up on top. The challenges, we do not believe that this will fully address the deficiency in coverage in the fourth ward. We may see some improvement. Certainly, a tower in the proposed location will benefit District 115 and 67, their administrative headquarters. Some enhancement may reach as far as Everett and Waukegan. We won't know that until it's in place and until we can do some further study. The other significant issue is that currently, the city receives revenue. The leases that AT&amp;T and T-Mobile have now are with the city. They are on our infrastructure, and those total about $200,000 annually. So, there would be a loss. We estimate, based on Tower North's estimate, that we would receive about $32,000 to $40,000 a year from their revenue sharing from their providers. So, there would be a loss of about $150,000. I think it is important to note that we have heard from AT&amp;T on several occasions and had some pretty aggressive contacts from them insisting that they want to renegotiate the contract, that the contract we have with them, they claim is significantly out of market in comparison to other leases that they have with other communities. So, we aren't guaranteed that that $200,000 that we currently receive would continue in the future. Again, the main benefit is to try and put in one more puzzle piece that will help the goal you've identified in enhancing wireless service in the community. Staff does recommend, again, this is not final action, but we recommend that you direct us, authorize us, in coordination with the city attorney, to negotiate a lease. us, authorize us, in coordination with the city attorney, to negotiate a lease with Tower North with a focus on negotiating terms that really are beneficial to the city, whether that's a shorter time or increased revenue sharing. And a shorter time would go to the second goal of expediting the installation of the So we're looking for direction from you tonight. Should we proceed with negotiations in an expedited manner to the extent possible with Tower North? Do you want to move forward? Do you want to pause this? Do you want further information? So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Questions or comments for Ms. Sernia? Alderman Notes.
Thank you, Kathy. Two questions. As I'm reading the write-up here on the Tower North proposal, the twenty-eight hundred a month is per carrier, not for two or three. So it sounds, by my math, we're getting closer to, if you get three carriers who are paying the minimum of twenty-eight hundred, you know, well over a hundred thousand dollars, not a year versus thirty-three odd thousand. Am I missing the math?
Yeah, but it's... I think you are.
Twenty-eight hundred times twelve would be roughly thirty-four thousand, times three. So now you're at a hundred and twenty.
Thirty percent of the...
Oh, the twenty-eight hundred, so the twenty-eight hundred is not the thirty percent? Twenty-eight hundred is the rent amount?
Yes. We asked Tower North for their estimate of what they think that they can get from each provider, and their range was twenty-eight hundred to four thousand, or something like that. So there is that significant loss of revenue.
I would note, just for, to that question, though, obviously, this was an initial offer. Per the direction being requested tonight, staff would attempt to negotiate more favorable financial terms. I know Antle Glink, through their office, has a real estate professional attorney who negotiates these regularly for communities. So I think it's important and transparent to acknowledge, we may not recoup the current revenue collections on an annual basis, but we do hope that we can negotiate more favorable terms than what was presented here.
And to your point, I would like to just sort of suggest that if we're paying, AT&amp;T's paying us a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year right now, they might appreciate a reduction to sixty thousand, and we'd be happy to take a third of that. Just an idea.
Kathy, part two of my question is, can we make the agreement contingent on them getting three leases versus just...
I think we can try to negotiate anything. Again, we are coming to you early in this process, but we would work closely with the city's, city attorney's office, and if there's anything specific you want us to push on, obviously, more revenue, moving forward with this as quickly as possible. My expectation is also that there would be a transition period. I'm not sure immediately after the tower was in place that AT&amp;T and T-Mobile would move off. I think there clearly is, they will be motivated to move off, both to achieve a reduction in rent and for T-Mobile to get that increased height.
I think if we, to the extent we can, I think really, that helps make the argument of why this is additive for us, so we're not just giving up revenue just to end up back effectively where we are today. That's all. Thank you, Mayor.
Other comments, questions?
Could you go back to the map, please?
Sure.
And just help orientate me again one more time?
This one or the other one?
This one. You know, the one where you think...
Okay.
Better show me where the, or here, this is...
Okay.
Where's the tower location?
This is the water tower, and without all the floodplain on there...
Yes, perfect.
Actually, it's harder for me without the floodplain. But generally, in this area, it would be southeast of the existing water tower.
Yeah.
Generally, in this area.
Okay.
So...
So kind of where I would back up my car to unload my leaves?
That area is right here, and then there's a small shed.
Yeah. Just... Oh, farther south of it.
And this was the identified area.
Ah, so...
Where you would back up.
Yep. Okay. So where they used to have the piles of leaves decomposing?
Yeah.
No?
And I'd certainly invite a clarification...
I was going to say, Director Thomas could probably answer.
Let's just put it as far south as we can and get the show on.
Well, you can't see it on that floor. Come on.
You are correct. Where we used to compost, where we had the windrows of compost.
Yeah.
Absolutely correct. If you look where the shed is at...
Yeah.
It is, this would go literally right next to it, west side of the shed.
Okay.
The corner of the area where we had our windrows.
Got you. Thank you. All right. So Kathy, I think, I mean, obviously, this is going to be a monopole, so this would be an opportunity for the community to feel and experience what that might look like in a location that's fairly well-hidden by some tall trees. So my question to you is, what will the ground structure look like? Because obviously, this will be an opportunity for us to showcase to the community how intrusive or unintrusive that might look.
I'm going to interrupt for just a second because I'd like to remind everybody that what we're doing here is, we're just, we're not planning a structure, we're authorizing entry into negotiation for this. So as much as we want to negotiate the lease and do all this, I think we should just, this is a binary choice. Either we do nothing or we take a step further toward doing this. And so I'd like not to sort of have too much detailed discussion if we can...
That's fair. I'm happy to answer that question.
I do think clarification on that point is important, though, so no one's being misled. This tower would have the external antenna arrays. What we were talking about when we talked about the train station was a flagpole monopole, which would have the canisters inside that pole. And as far as ground equipment, if you've been out there and you have driven around the tower to dump your leaves, what you see below the tower is the ground equipment. And Tower North was asking for a ground lease of sixty-five by sixty-five. So you would have various cabinets, for lack of a better word, at that base with a security fence around it. So I just didn't want to mislead that this would be the same tower. It may be the same as used elsewhere, but there are other technologies that could be used.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Alderman Powers.
Kathy, when you mentioned losing a hundred and fifty thousand in revenue, that kind of gets my attention. Is that of concern? I mean, it seemed like we could absorb that or handle that without too much difficulty. I just would like your reassurance of that.
I wouldn't say it's not of concern, and that's why we wanted to be very straightforward. The revenue we're currently getting from those leases is not guaranteed into the future. As I said, we've already had aggressive conversations with AT&amp;T. And again, the impact, the benefit of removing the wireless facilities from the tower has some value, but certainly, losing a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, more or less, is of concern, and that's why we've come to you early with this, looking for your direction.
I'm okay with that. I just wanted to double-check.
Just to clarify for the council, too, and Director Skibby, correct me if I'm wrong, but because the existing infrastructure and leases are on the water tower, we have historically budgeted the lease proceeds into the water capital fund. And so the reduction in revenue would come from, in the water fund. If this is no longer on the water tower, the new lease revenue would likely go into the general fund. And so we'll have conversations with the council next week about water rates as we look forward, but it may be something to consider as part of this conversation.
Alderman Powers.
Kathy, my first question is, we don't want to build this tower and not have the two providers leave the water tower. We want them to leave the water tower if we're going to put another facility in there. So that needs to be a binary choice, in my opinion, as we go forward. The next comment I would make, knowing that this is just the next step and us trying to solve a problem...
Mm-hmm.
I think we all believe and are skeptical that this isn't going to really solve the problem in the southwest quadrant or in the fourth ward. The statement was kind of definitive, it will not solve the problem. We don't know that yet. We need to get this tower up. We need to get the three providers. We need to assess what that looks like in terms of congestion or change of phone towers from other aspects of the city and beyond, ultimately to determine what we may or may not have to do as a next step, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Alderman Novit.
I think one of the concerns that we had at the initial conversation about adding another tower was that public safety needs the reliability of additional cell service as well. And I see that as a benefit in establishing better equipment in a location that is felt citywide.
And what we do know is that if we have what, in the industry, they call a major site, which is a tower, then they are more able to implement secondary sites, which are the smaller antennas on light poles. So there is a secondary benefit.
Alderman Weber.
Thank you so much for this information. My just comments would be that I think it would be supportive of this next step for negotiation and to learn more of what our options for revenue would be and some of the additional details along with that agreement.
Very good. Other comments, questions? Anybody from the audience that would like to comment? Hearing none? Okay. So this time, we'd like to have a motion to authorize staff to engage in lease negotiations with Tower North to the goal of expediting installation of a cell tower at the city's compost center to enhance service to residents and businesses in the community as well as those traveling through the community. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second, please. This will be a roll call vote.
Alderman Walther.
Aye.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Clemens?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Powers?
Aye.
Bert? Due to employment, I abstain.
Alderman Bothfeld?
Aye.
Alderman Weber?
Aye.
Seven yays, one abstention. Motion carries.
Excellent. Next item is new business, of which there is none this evening. Is there any other comments or items for discussion by council members? Alderman Novit.
I had a comment. I was so happy to attend the Friends of the Lake Forest Library, Lake Forest Reads session on Sunday afternoon with the author, William Kent Kruger, who was brought in to discuss the Lake Forest Reads novel, The River We Remember. It was a wonderful program. The book was great. I highly encourage everyone to pay attention for the next Lake Forest Reads installation in September of 2026. It's a great, it's a wonderful program, and the Friends of the Library raises the money through the book sale to bring these authors into the city, and it's just phenomenal. So thank you.
I'm halfway through the book. Interesting book. Yeah. So, okay, this time, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn into executive session pursuant to five ILCS one-twenty slash two, parentheses, CN two, collective bargaining, and five purchase or lease of real property for the use of public body. May I have a motion to adjourn into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
This will be a roll call vote.
Alderman Novit. Aye.
Alderman Clemens?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Powers?
Aye.
Alderman Lebert?
Aye.
Alderman Bothfeld?
Aye.
Alderman Weber?
Aye.
Alderman Walther?
Aye.
Eight yays, zero nay, motion carries.
Excellent. There will be no further business conducted at the completion of executive session.